I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. And also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. The meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Williams to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for the opportunity to come before you this day. Father God, we thank you for all those in attendance. Lord God, we thank you for all those who've stepped up to take on the responsibility of service, Father God. Father, we ask that you will continue to touch our hearts and our minds, that we may make wise and thoughtful decisions, Father God. Father God, we ask you to continue to bless those, Father, as we prepare for inclement weather. Father God, we ask you to continue to cover and touch and take care, Father God, of all of our citizens, Father God, and provide us with the foresight, Father, to plan appropriately and through it all, Father, if we give you the glory, the honor, and the praise. For it's in Jesus' name we ask it all. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on June 29.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of June 25th through July 1st.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Are there any proclamations? We have unfinished business. If you look at item eight, this is an ordinance rezoning property located at 1706 Forest Avenue from I-1 Light and Industry District to B-1 Neighborhood Business District. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. The owner requests the rezoning to allow for the use of an automotive service and repair shop. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam President, I just want to make one thing clear. This was a piece of property on Forest Avenue that used to be a junkyard, and it was zoned industrial, and now it's going to be operated as an automotive service center, which isn't appropriate for an industrial zoning, so it's going back to a B-1 so that it can operate as a service center. But similar line of business.
Okay, thank you. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Obey.
We have one abstention. Motion carries to adopt.
This is a time and place, as advertised, to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 926 Southland Avenue in District 2, Robert Ransaw and wife Canetta Ransaw and Roger Keith Williams being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? If you'll come and give your name and address, please.
Good morning. My name is Pranita Ransaw. And by that we purchased 926, not also with the intention of fixing it up. That's what we would like to do, but of course we got letter and mail about the nuisance and everything. We would still like to do that, but we also received your calls in case we have to be alone. So basically, I just wanted to see if, I guess about how much time we would have if we could ratify.
Okay, you were saying, I'm sure that some of them didn't hear you.
Okay, so we purchased 926 with the intention on renovating the property, but due to lumber and materials being so high, we haven't had a chance to do so yet. We've gotten quotes on what will be needed to demo it if we have to, but we were wondering if we could have more time to renovate it. We were kind of hoping for lumber prices and everything to go down before we did so.
How much time are you?
Yeah, that's kind of something you have to provide to us. You have to let us know how much time you need.
Okay, so again, the issue is the prices right now of materials. I can't foresee, I'm sure, you know, none of us can, about when those prices may go down. We would like a year or two or more, if possible.
Just to put it in perspective, we usually don't, we usually have a heated debate if we're going beyond 30 days.
Yeah, and part of the reason, and Ms. Ransaw, don't, please understand, this is not anything against you and your family, because obviously, we want to see people develop the houses, but you're encountering a unique set of circumstances. Material costs are incredibly expensive now, and so I know it's probably gotten in the way of some things you had planned.
Right.
But the unfortunate thing is probably what Mr. Harbison and the councilman from that district is getting is the phone calls from the community where they've identified that property as a nuisance property. And so, as much as we would like to give a protracted amount of time for you to kind of make a decision on that, they're not going to let us get away with that.
Okay.
So that's really our biggest challenge. We can give you some additional time, we just need to, you know, understand after that extension, that some progress, that's what he'll be looking for. He'll come out there and he'll do an assessment. If you're making progress, then another extension.
Okay.
Continue to make progress, then another extension. And at the point that no progress is being made, then that's typically when he has to stop and say, hey, I recommend that we move on.
Okay.
Yeah, so not anything personal, it's just him responding to the complaints. And I hope you guys have talked about that.
I have spoke with him.
Okay.
I have a question, Ms. Ransaw. And looking at the pictures, it looks like there could be some things done, and maybe they've already, well, this was taken July 1st, so there are some things that could be done that aren't cost-related to materials that might would help, would go a long way with the neighbors.
Okay.
So I would encourage you to, you know, you can see where there's some things that could be thrown away, maybe just tidied up somewhat, and maybe there could be a little bit of construction, not construction, but some things done that would show effort on your part, and that gives us a chance to work with you that you're, we can tell, we can see that you're trying to move forward, and we understand the cost, everybody's dealing with that.
Right, right.
A sheet of plywood was $8, now it's $48, so we understand that. But if you could put forth, if y'all could put forth some effort, I think that would go a long way in 30 days.
Okay, we'll certainly do that, for sure.
Thank you. Appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you all.
So Ms. Ransaw, before you, I just want to make sure of what we can give you. Would 30 days help you?
30 days will help. If we decide that costs are just too high and we're going to demo it, I spoke with Mr. Harbison, and he was telling me that we could go and pursue, I think it's called a demo permit, so we'll just have to sit down. But yes, 30 days, that's a start. We'll definitely do as much as we can within that time.
Okay.
Ma'am, how long ago did y'all buy the property?
It hasn't been long, maybe a year, if that long ago? It hasn't been long, though.
Y'all hadn't taken out a building permit or anything?
Yes, I forgot to mention that. We did, we do have a building permit. Thank you, I forgot to mention that.
I was going to ask too, what's your purpose for the house?
First, we were wanting to get it up to par and livable and maybe rent it out. We just didn't want an empty lot and have it torn down.
Right, but we need rental, I mean, we're in need of that kind of stock investment.
Yeah, I agree.
So thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
We can work together if we just see some improvement.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone speaking in favor?
Madam President, I'll just give you, sorry, a little history of the case. We filed this property, I'm Brian Harbison, by the way, the building department, sorry. We filed the case in June of last year, so we've been working on it just a little over 13 months. Our records indicate there's not a building permit, but that's really not an issue, depending on where the conversation may end up taking us today. Regardless, there have been no improvements, as Mr. Back mentioned, there are several things that could be done on the outside of the house. And as I've stated many times before at this microphone, we're more concerned with the exterior of the property. If they could put all of their focus on finishing everything on the exterior, I'd be willing to move the case from the council and just handle it locally in our department and work with them with the issues on the inside. She had mentioned trying to qualify this house for rental property, and so there's a process to go through there. I'm not opposed to giving time, I would just ask that we work this 30 days at a time.
So what is the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion that we give 30 days.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
So Ms. Ransaw, you understand that you have 30 days, and if it comes back before us, then there will probably be a different voting procedure, but we just wanted you to know that you have 30 days to get with Mr. Harbison again and go from there.
Okay, and that was my first time hearing that about the exterior that may have been said before we got the property, but that's good to know. So thank you, I appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Our next public hearing is a resolution to abate nuisance on property located at 211 Argyle Circle in District 5, Sheila Freeman, Somerville, subject to a mortgage in favor of Wells Fargo Bank, N.A., being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Councilwoman Williams? Is there anyone speaking in favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in September of last year, there've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Mr. Harbison, is that one we couldn't rehab?
That is the plan. Because of where it is, we're dealing with, in this case, would be the Argyle Historic Society. They have a process that we would have to go through to do any changes to the property. Only thing we would do as far as rehab would be to go in and bring the outside of the property back online. Somebody's keeping the property cut, I'm sure that's some of the neighbors, but we are asking for a resolution. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilwoman Worthy, just to be clear, there are several folks who are interested, I think, in persons purchasing this property. There's just some confusion about the ownership, and it's been, it's fallen into a state of disrepair, so I don't think there's any chance this is going to end up getting torn down.
Well, okay, that's good.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 103 Body Street in District 7, and this is Caitlin Haygood and Cameron Haygood, Leroy Lee Mink, in care of Caitlin Haygood and Cameron Haygood and Leroy Mink being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anybody like to speak in favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in October of last year, there've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
I have to move to adopt.
Okay.
Second.
What's the pledge of the council? Did I get a?
Second.
Cannon, second. We got it.
Now, clerk, will you take the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance located on property at 27 Little Street in District 7, Kelly Ann Hicks, subject to a mortgage in favor of the Compass Bank, subject to a mortgage in favor of the City of Gaston being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone speak in favor?
Madam President, we filed our case in August of last year, there've been no improvements. There was a building permit taken out in October, but no work has been done, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I would move to adopt, but I think the stature of this house doesn't look all that bad on the outside. How's it look inside, Brian, or around?
We haven't done a full assessment, just based on the outside.
Yeah, well, I hate to, I'll go ahead and move to adopt, and then we can look into it further, Brian can handle it.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 30 Little Street in District 7, and this is Eminem Real Estate Equities LLC and possible right of redemption to Claude Mayberry being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speak in favor?
Madam President, we filed our case in August of last year, there've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I will move to adopt, but as the prior one we talked about, Brian, this house looks like it'd be perfect for rehab, or we, whatever we do with it, but I'm sure Mr. Harbison will be on top of it. Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 14 is a resolution authorizing an addendum to the Video Services Agreement with AT&amp;T. This extends the term of the agreement authorized by Resolution Number R-306-10 until December 31st, 2026. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our last resolution is authorizing acceptance of a donation from Destin Mintz Enterprises, and this is for donation of a six-by-40 corner porch cabin, bade at $15,750 to be used for the petting zoo at Nakalula Fall. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business?
Yes, Madam President, I have a couple of these here. Can we do these at the same time, 1402 and 1404 Jackson?
I believe with the consent of the council, yes.
All right, here are no objection. I'd like to introduce a resolution authorizing the satisfaction of a nuisance abatement lien at 1402 Jackson Avenue and 1404 Jackson Avenue. I believe the checks for these two properties have been received.
Yes.
Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion to, for unanimous consent for these.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider both resolutions as an item of new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt both resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next items are citizen requests, Joseph Cole Neighborhood Crime and COVID Funds. He's not here. We have Ms. Norma, and Ms. Norma, so that I won't be judged, would you pronounce your last name for me, please?
Pesqualees.
Pesqualees, okay, normal Pesqualees. Pesqualees, and she's here to talk about dangerous animals and ordinance.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, I'm here today.
Is your mic on, and if you're speaking, your mic?
Can you all hear me? Okay, yes, I'm here this morning to speak on behalf of myself and my family and my neighbors. A group of my neighbors are actually here with me, and we are requesting that the dangerous animals ordinance that was in effect a couple of years ago be reinstated. We feel we have very good reason for this. We have some neighbors that are breeding pit bulls that, they have three females and a male, they acquired the male recently, he's got a scarred face, it's, you know, for breeding. They admit that the male's a fighter. They had one pit bull which was recently found with a noose around its neck, stabbed and shot, you know, and after that, somebody felt sorry for them and said, okay, we're going to give you two pit bulls. They came out of, I don't know where they heard or saw that, and then they acquired the male, and they're breeding them. They have no fenced-in yard, front or back is not fenced in. You can hear the dogs like howling and barking in their basement. They like to tether the dogs, some of them in the backyard, like after hours when animal ordinance, what do you, I'm sorry, animal control, you know, is not open. I go to my mailbox every day with a dog horn and a stick. I don't allow my teenage son to mow the front yard because I'd rather me be attacked by these dogs than him. And one of my neighbors was actually, he and his wife were walking their dog past the house one day, and the door was open, and they heard the stepdad yell to the little boy, shut that door, don't you know if these dogs got out, they would chew them up? So, and then the people next door to them have a rottweiler that they let run loose. But we are all very much afraid of these dogs, we don't feel comfortable to walk around our neighborhood anymore. Like I said, I carry a stick and a dog horn just to go to my mailbox. You know, I know male men who tell me, you know, pepper spray is no good against them. I've heard like a 38 special won't even stop them. You know, we know they're dangerous. Like I said, no fencing, I mean, we just feel like this ordinance needs to be reinstated. That requires, you know, containment with the double fencing, with a kennel inside a fence, and the kennel fence, or the fence goes so far into the ground so they can't dig out, that they have insurance, that they have a permit, they're required to get a permit. We do not want to wait for someone to be mauled or killed before this action is taken. So, you know, we come together today, like I said, there's a group of us, and we're just respectfully asking that this ordinance be reinstated. It never should have been altered or revoked in the first place. You know, we have a right to feel safe, and some cities have actually banned pit bulls, they don't even allow them. There are several cities in Alabama who have completely banned them, you know, and nationwide, and we're not asking for a ban, we're just asking to reinstate the stricter ordinance. We feel that is only right and fair, so.
Okay, Ms.
We're going to let Ms., we're going to let their attorney.
I wanted, before, I was going to call on him, but before that, I've talked to Ms. Pesqualees, maybe, what, two times?
Yes, sir.
And we had the animal control up there, they've already been, and I'm in total commitment with her. I wouldn't live in that situation, let alone the neighbors too. But anyway, Sam Snoper explained to her the change, Lee, from us to state and back, and we've had it in committee once that I know of, and at that time, I wish you would come up to the mic and tell her what the problem is with state as opposed to local law and what we might can do.
Right, well, I'm with you. I mean, we were not happy about changing that law, but there have been lawsuits that are protecting these owners, and there was a change of the state, state law, and I've said, if you want to come up to my office one day, we can make an appointment, we can sit down and look at it, and if we come up with a solution, I'd be glad, be open to it, because, believe you me, your plight is not unique. It is, I mean, there's other citizens in the city who have the same plight that you do, but we're just, you know, we had to change our ordinance to comply with state law.
When did the state law take place?
I don't know, about two years ago.
Two or three years ago, yeah.
Okay, I may interject something. My understanding is that from a legal standpoint, and there's actually a clause in that state code that refers to this, but cities have the right to instate a stricter ordinance in state law concerning, you know, dangerous dogs or dangerous animals, and.
If you were making an appointment, we can go over that.
I just don't understand what's stopping that, you know, because we see it in other cities. Other cities have stricter ordinances, and other cities, some of them actually even have bans, so I have a difficult time understanding, you know, why this can't be reinstated.
Ms. Pesqualee, just from my own research, can you give me some of those other cities so I can look into how their ordinances are written?
Most of them are sort of located around Birmingham, I believe, like Irondale, Tarrant. Do you remember a couple of the others? Is it, was one that?
Yeah, I just want to go read their code.
There's several, like if you just Google it, there's several, there's like a handful of them around the state, but, you know, several of them are kind of close around Birmingham.
Can I might say that our city clerk has.
But yes, they have complete bans on them, and we're not even asking for that. This is a compromise with pit bull owners. You know, we're just asking that these strict ordinances be put back into place, because you can't tell me that if one of us or one of our family members got mauled or killed, that you wouldn't go ahead and reinstate this on the spot today. I mean, why do we have to wait for something like that to happen? I mean, this is just.
I agree with you.
It's just not right.
Good.
Yeah, everybody up here is in agreement. Have same issue in my neighborhood with pit bulls, and, you know, I was appalled at the fact that the law, at least they should have insurance, they should be, you know, they be, but what they do, like everybody, like you just said, they hide them after, if you call animal control, then they disappear into their houses or you can't find them, and so that makes it hard, too.
What if they could drive by and hear the barking and the howling, and like, like I said, one of my neighbors is here who actually is a firsthand witness that heard the father, the stepfather say to the boy, close that door, you need to close that door. If those pit bulls get out, they will chew them to pieces, they'll eat them up, and that's literally what he heard them say, so they know how dangerous they are, and you know, it's just, it's just, nobody should have to put up with those kind of, you know, things going on.
Well, I recommend and can tell you to, you and the neighbors, come to the attorney, you know, not let it go, come to the attorney's office and see what can come up so that an ordinance, if we need to look at an ordinance to change what you're saying, but put forth the effort to come to his office so you all can come up with some type of an agreement in looking at what we can do as a city.
Okay.
Good.
I hope you come too.
All right, thank you. Our remarks by the council. Councilwoman Worthy?
Ms. Ransaw?
Yes.
I just want to say thank you for the people that attended the District 3 slash Town Hall meeting. We talked about the. Hall meeting, we talked about the crime issue, and we will follow up and have another meeting, and we will talk with, and try to come up with a better plan, so I just want to say thank you for everybody that attended, thanks.
Okay, and before I continue, I know I skipped and went straight to, are there any board reports that we need to hear at this time? Okay, then I'll go to Councilman Cannon.
Thank you, Madam President, the pre-council meeting, I talked about trying to give the employees a raise in this next budget, I was trying to give them, maybe if we could give them a two dollar an eye raise, plus the next year, give them a dollar more, we've got employees that I talked about, some of them called me last week, and they bring two hundred and forty dollars home a week, and they live by themselves and they can't even get by by themselves, and I think that's why we need to, to raise our pay up so we can keep our employees that's working, we've got firemen, policemen, people with CDL license and just secretaries and everything that needs a good raise, and I think to keep these people here, we're going to have to do something like that. My dad always told me, and he's been gone about forty-two years, when me and my brother was coming up, we'd tell him, we couldn't do this, we can't do that, and in my house, my daddy would say, can't never could, you can do anything you set your mind to, there's some way you can get it done, you might have to cut in other areas or some like that, but there's some way we can give our employees this kind of raise, keep our employees where we don't have this big turnover all the time, we know we're short on policemen, we're short on firemen, park decorations, secretaries, we're short all over, we did studies after studies saying we was top-heavy and, and you know, we're getting to the point now, we've, to keep our employees, we're going to have to pay them something, and I just hope and pray this council and this administration finds that money, because I want to go on record saying, I want at least a two dollar an eye raise for everybody, and, you know, heard can't, but can't's not in vocabulary, if you can want to, and you can find a way somewhere to do this, that's all I got.
Councilman Reed?
Yeah, I wanted to thank everybody who attended the fireworks on July the fourth, the Gadsden Patriot Association, and I especially wanted to thank Charles Gilchrist from Glencoe, he did a lot of work on it, and he deserves the credit, thank you.
Councilman Back?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, wanted to publicly acknowledge the work that Chet Holman's doing at our Twin Bridges Golf Course, played golf there this past Saturday with friends from out of town, and they were just, just really impressed with the golf course, as was everybody that was out there. Chet also has landed the Alabama Open, which is a state championship for golfers twenty-five and older, amateur golfers and professional golfers, that'll be at the end of the month, I think the last weekend in July, it's a really big deal, I think it might be the first time that's ever been held in Gadsden, you typically see it held in Birmingham, Montgomery, Mobile, places like that, so I was really pleased that Chet was able to do that, that is a really big deal for Gads, we'll have all kind of people from all over the state come and stay at our hotels, eat at our restaurants, so thank you, Chet, and all the, all the folks that work out there at the golf course, it's in excellent condition, and they've just done a great job, I think, also want to thank Destin Mint Enterprises for the, for the building, fifteen thousand dollar or so building that they've donated to Nakalula Falls for the petting zoo, echo what Ben said about the Patriot celebration, or the July Fourth celebration put on by the Patriots Association, what a great event, there's been some great pictures I've seen, some from the mountain, Nakalula Falls mountain coming down, it's just really, really a great job, it's an annual event that is always excellent, never, never fails to, just to be a really good positive time for our city, and also wanted to point out, somebody who never really gets any, well, doesn't get a lot of recognition, but that's our city clerk, Iva Nelson, Iva, last, this past week, she's looking at me funny, was a, made a presentation at the, at the State City Clerks, I don't know what you call that, a convention or a gathering?
It's our summer conference.
Summer conference, there we go, at the City Clerk Summer Conference, a year or so ago, Iva was selected as the City Clerk of the Year for the State of Alabama, and y'all, we, we have the, gosh, I'm an Auburn graduate, and I hate to say, we have the Nick Saban of city clerks here in Gadsden, in Iva Nelson, so she gets calls all the time from clerks all over the state looking for advice, seeking advice, and so just wanted to recognize you, Iva, thank you for your work, and it does not go unnoticed, you really kind of keep things together, mostly behind the scenes, but it's, it's appreciated, and I'm sure your presentation was well received, so, thank you very much, and that's all I have.
Councilman Wilson?
I don't have anything, Madam President.
Councilman Worthy?
Thank you, Madam President, I'll just, you know, expound on what Councilman Back said about Ms. Iva, you guys have heard me say it from time to time, that she's the city clerk's clerk, I mean, and she, she truly is, she's, she's highly, very, highly regarded within her craft and within, within her peer group, she receives quite a few calls from other cities, and, and one of the things that has made the transition for me in particular, from mostly private sector experience to, to some of the nuanced public sector items, is just having Ms. Iva there, she helps to keep us out of trouble, and, and if you have noticed, if you've been paying attention, as we turn over administrations, you get the same message about her, she's no respecter of person, if you are on this council, she understands that it's her role to support you, help you, provide you with guidance, and she does that, she always has, and you would be hard pressed, and, and again, I'll say this publicly, as I've said it publicly before, if you find somebody that doesn't like Ms. Iva, you need to look at them funny because something's wrong with them, she's that kind of person, so, so I really do appreciate it, and congratulations to you, Iva, that's all I've got.
Okay. This is a reminder, due to the holiday yesterday, Monday's garbage route is being collected today, Tuesday's route will be collected on Wednesday, and Thursday and Friday's route will not change, the public announcement that I did in pre-council, I'll do it again here, the City of Gaston is set to receive a little over twenty-four million dollars in coronavirus local physical recovery funds, which are part of the American Rescue Plan Act, these funds are intended to provide support for local governments in responding to the economic and public health impact of COVID-19. The city will hold a public meeting on July 13, 2021, from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM at the venue, to allow the public an opportunity to provide input with how the funds could be spent. The U.S. Department of Treasury has published eligible uses of the funds, and they will be posted on the city's website prior to the meeting. There's nothing else, I call for a motion to adjourn.